Welcome to Scottsburg's Council on this first, uh, city council meeting in June. This is June the twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, and we'll call our council to order for this evening. The first thing we do when we call council order before we go into our meetings, we have prayer and the pledge of allegiance. So if everybody wouldn't mind a stand, I'll say the prayer and we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Father, we bow before you this day, praise the name of our Lord and Savior and coming King. Father, we thank you for the day of pilgrimage you've given unto us. It has been a joy to be able to spend it with you and Father, with those who walk a similar pilgrimage. So Father, we pray for us, our town, our city. We pray for Scottsburg, Father, that you keep us unto yourself. Thank you, Father, for people that, that, uh, have such generosity in their hearts for others. Thank you, Father, that we are caring in the city. Thank you, Father, that we are not a me city. But Father, we have so many folks here that just, that just want to help each other and, uh, and just love you. So Father, we lift this up today, or lift up, uh, Dale Hobbs, Father, as I've heard. He's not well right now, and we just pray for healing for him and for his life as well. We love you, we praise you, Jesus, and we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. The next on our agenda this evening is the roll call by Clerk Treasurer Jan Hardy.
Mayor Amy?
Here.
Chris Albertson? Bill Humphrey?
Here.
Here. Okay, good, Chris, I got you. Uh, Rick Vance? Chris Shumey Evans?
Here.
Chuck Rose?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Uh, next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of May twenty-two. This last meeting we had in May of two thousand twenty-three. If you had a chance to read over the minutes and you see no errors or typos or any additions that need to be made, we'll take a motion to attempt the minutes as presented. Chuck Rose makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Christian Edna Segs. Uh, any questions, comments? Bring them on, please, the eye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Chris, I'm gonna say that was an I for approval, right?
Yes, sir.
There's a little delay, sorry about that. So unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, the next thing we have is a public hearing regarding the appropriation of additional funds for the city of Scottsburg. Josh.
This is additional, I think, just do the hearing, call us in here, I mean.
Okay. Okay. Uh, this is a public hearing for appropriation of additional funds for the city of Scottsburg. Is anybody here would like to comment on this? Going once? Going twice? Close the public hearing. Next, we have a time for public comment for the city. The Scottsburg City Council will accept public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council will be asked to come forward and state their name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. The marks should focus on issues and not be used to target city officials, city employees, or elected officials. This time, if you've got a complaint about your neighbor's dog marking or something you see that is awry, now's the time to come forward and make your, knowing your knowledge, if you'd like to do this. Anyone? Going once? Going twice? Close the public comment there. Next on our agenda is the Christian Academy with our teacher Natalie Gray. So, if you guys can come forward. Let me tell you a little something about Christian Academies they've been coming up. They've, they've had, uh, their, their administration, their teachers have been so, uh, kind and having. They're making cities. They made, literally made cities in classrooms and it's, 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 the entire classroom has been changed into a normal, as far as city. They have coal lines, they have electricity, they have hydroelectric, they have nuclear, they have literally the sewer lines running, the water line running from the lakes. They have all of the airports, they have the fire stations, the police stations. And it's amazing because you feel like a jelly green giant. You're stepping over all of these areas and looking up from the sky. So it's been neat because when, when I go there, we've got these gentlemen who, I built this. I did this one, I did this one. And it's really neat. And then they come here to be able to see what's going on. And then we were making each department set so we can actually take our element of students through each department. So they're going through the food department, the water department, the tree department, the fire department. So we're getting it cleaned up and cleaned up so that things can all fit in shamelessly. So just to, just to kind of introduce what's going on. Ms. Gray, what can I?
Hi, I would like to introduce you, the mayor of, um, Grace, uh, Christian Academy's first grade class. And, uh, remember, we elect our mayor and then everyone else is appointed to the city council. And we learn democracy because anything that comes up, whether it's a rule that's to be made or, uh, decision of what to have for the parties and stuff like that, the kids decide. So that practices, uh, democracy and then we built the city, like I said. And this is our mayor and he has our number for each one of him. He has a, a card, a business card, so if you get to wear it one day, he's asking for your vote.
And this is your white angel for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I introduce these people to you? This is Councilman Hoagland right here, can you shake his hand?
Thank you.
This is Clerk Treasurer Jan Hardy, can you shake her hand? This is our, this is our legal counsel, Mr. Josh Dignan. And then Councilman Chris Shumey Evans. This is Councilman Chuck Rovest. Mary, did you win by a big margin or a short one? Did you win pretty bad, David?
Didn't you, remember? We hope that you can't do it.
Hey, hey, Mary, you know what we do, right?
We, uh, like I said, and he was talking about, we made a city, uh, and then it's big enough that the kids love to play in it at recess, alright, with their toys and things. So what I've done is compiled a book about it and Jacob's gonna give that to Mayor Terry because Mayor Terry come to start a classroom on three different occasions.
Can I come around with you? Can I come around, let's, let's, let's take a picture, can I do that?
And he, he spends, the first time he spends about an hour with us, the second time he comes, he spends another hour with, uh, no, he spends a couple hours with us the next time. The first time he just tells us about his job to help out our mayor a little bit. And then the next time. The next time he comes, uh, he comes and he, uh, spends two hours with us seeing the city and, and talking with the kids about each of the businesses.
We've got some entrepreneurs here. We've got, uh, you know, hunting stations named after some of them and stores differently named after them, so it's been really great.
And our, our city this year was called Sunset City. We've done this for, like, that's my classroom for about five years now. And it's, uh, always a different type of city, but the outcomes always kind of meet because they work so much about, uh, democracy and the city government and things like that. So we wanted to give that copy to you.
Thank you so much.
And, uh, make sure you understand that we really appreciate you coming by.
Absolutely, thank you so very much. We have, we have Chuck Rose as an educator here and Rick Vance as an educator. And so we can all really appreciate what you're doing. So we want to give a round of applause to you.
And this is one of our great councilmen, this is Grace.
Hey, Grace.
And for you guys to know, what if these kids are six and seven years old? When they start this process, they're just barely six. And so they don't know actually what they're, you know, going for. Actually, they know that we've talked about a mayor and all that, but they really don't understand what it is. And they're end of the year and we keep seeing him. And then they want to sit and he's laughing and everything else. Thank you very much.
They all come up and get their pictures in. The, uh, and I don't know whether, I hope these guys are gonna make it. And Mayor, will you be able to make the fire camp this year? Remember we talked about that we've got a fire camp for kiddos and it's about a week long. And they all go out to our fire station and they're able to get all different fire trucks. You go through the smoke houses and we fly a helicopter in, let them get in the helicopter and all the trucks. So this is our future firefighters. These are our future mayors and councilmen. These are our future doctors and attorneys. And, uh, so we applaud you guys. So thank you so very much for all you do.
And this is Mayor Jacob Fox.
Chris, were you able to hear any of all that, Mary?
Anyway.
Can you hear that?
Yeah, were you able, were you able to hear all that?
I did, yeah.
Amen, absolutely, absolutely. Ms. Gray, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jacob, Mayor Jacob, thank you so much, old buddy. See, Fred, have a good day, buddy.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening is from our tree board presentation by President. I'll be in a break. Chuck's here, hey Chuck.
And Tom's here.
And Tom's here, hey, Tom.
So I am Malina Craig, the president of the city of Scottsburg Tree Board. We are in the process of wrapping up a grant that we've been working on for the last year and a half. So we have some members of the tree board here to tell you about it. We're really excited to tell you what we did and where we did it and when we did it and who we did it to. So, um, behind me, while we're doing this presentation, there are a bunch of pictures of some of our events. So that's what you're seeing up there. So I'm gonna start just by giving you kind of an overview of our grant application and the details of the grant. So back in August of two thousand twenty-one, so a little over a year and a half ago, um, the tree board applied for a U.S. Forest Service grant to plant trees in two city parks, Beechwood and Lake Iowa. And that was later amended to add a third park, Lindsagram. Uh, these grants are funded by the U.S. Forest Service and administered by the Indiana DNR Division of Urban Forestry in partnership with the Arbor Day Foundation. So there's a lot of entities involved. Um, and I am required by the terms of the grant to thank the U.S. Forest Service and Indiana DNR. And we very much thank them for this opportunity. Um, we had previously established a good relationship with DNR locally when we applied for this grant. So we were fairly confident that our request would be approved and it was subsequently approved in October of two thousand twenty-one. And that's when our grant started. We established three objectives in our grant application. The first was to have an inventory of trees done on the parks that we were working with. This was required to obtain funds for tree planting in those parks. The inventory told us what tree species we currently had and the condition and number of the existing trees. The second objective was to purchase and plant trees to enhance the existing inventory and expand on the species already present in the parks. The third objective was education of the public in planting and caring for trees. We received eighteen thousand dollars in grant funding. Since this was a matching grant, we used a variety of methods to obtain our match, including some funds from the city. Thank you. Um, volunteer labor, donations from Great Scott Trees, our local nonprofit, and private citizens. Of these, the bulk of our match came from volunteer labor, a total of six hundred and fifty-eight labor hours with a value of ten thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars to date. We definitely relied on our volunteers. Tom Springston is now going to talk to you a little bit about tree inventory and selection and purchase.
Thanks, Malina. And I'm doing a, say, Terry, appreciate you, shout out to Dale. He was gonna be here tonight, he, he's one of our valued members. Called me today and actually he got a tick bug on the mother there. He got it off right away and thought everything was fine, but three weeks later, he's in the hospital. They got a lot of antibiotics and UVs and he's gonna be gone rehabbed for a while, so we're gonna miss him. But appreciate that and pray that he continues getting well. So as Malina said, on our tree inventory, in December of two thousand twenty-one, we contracted with the Davie Resource Group of Indianapolis to perform a tree inventory. We'd originally planned on just concentrating on two of the parks, but after getting the bids back, we found we had budgeted and enough money to include a third park. So did Beechwood, Lake Iowa, and the Lindsagram parks. All three were inventoried on three days in early February of two thousand twenty-two. And that was a total cost of seven thousand and fifty dollars. They found a total of six hundred and seven trees, which included forty-seven different species. The most prevalent species was the apple, or really crab apple. And that comprised twenty-three percent of the total. And we had arborabate, uh, arborabate at eleven percent, sweet gum at ten percent, and maple, various maples also at ten percent. So of those six hundred and seven trees, they inventoried ninety-one percent were found to be in good or fair condition. But the inventory also noted that we still had thirty-five ash trees, many of which were in poor condition. And as you all know, the Parks Department has been working diligently to remove many of those ash trees. And they're continuing to monitor the health of the remaining ash trees. And it's just nationwide with the Emerald Ash Warders, what was really attacking them and taking them out. So that Davie Resource Group also gave us a risk assessment for each tree. So the good thing was ninety-five percent of them were found to be at low risk. But that risk, as you would probably imagine, is a potential for damage, injury, or loss. So we need to manage our urban forest to focus on mitigating that risk because that risk with it comes liability. So if we can reset risk to an acceptable level, which means taking action when trees have immediate maintenance needs, such as removal of dead and structurally unsound trees, you prune large dead limbs, broken limbs from otherwise sound trees, and you prune trees that interfere with your vehicular or pedestrian traffic. And I'm sure some of you all get some calls about why they have to cut that tree down and trim it so hard, but that's really where we're at, reducing that liability. So on the tree selection and purchase, one of the directives of the grant was that ninety percent of the trees that were planted back were to be species native to Indiana. So all the trees we selected were native, other than there was an umbrella magnolia, um, which is a native magnolia crossed with a non-native variety to improve the quality and showiness. Native trees have been shown to be much more resilient than non-native and they don't present the problems that can be caused by non-native species. For example, the current issues with the Bradford pear trees that are invading many of our forests. And we see them, you know, driving it down on the interstate and other roads. So we also wanted to get a lot of diversity in the planting. So diversity is important so that pests and disease don't affect a large number of trees all at once. Again, like the Emerald Ash Warders affecting the ash trees. So a recent study from Canada also found that diversity results in higher carbon storage in the soil and the higher soil nitrogen levels. So it's important we follow our, our agricultural rule of thumb, which is the right tree in the right place. So consideration needs to be made for the height of maturity, canopy spread, the leaf drop, the form or shape and the growth rate, taking into account the sun, soil, the moisture requirement, fruit drop, and hardiness zone. So our final planting plan had to be approved by the professionals at the Indiana Department of Natural Resources Division of Urban Forestry. And then the grant requires that trees be in nursery grade, with at least one inch in caliber for most of the species. And it's also required that we solicit bids from at least three providers. So we initially settled on Walnut Ridge in Jerseville for most of the trees and going a little further for a few trees that were not available locally. But again, most of them came from right here down Jerseville. So the final tree purchase was forty-seven trees, which totaled six thousand and two hundred dollars. So Malina is now just gonna talk about the tree planting events that we helped.
Let's pretend that I'm Dale because this was going to be Dale's section, so. So you're seeing pictures of some of our tree planting events up here. Our first tree planting event took place on April second, two thousand twenty-two, at Beechwood Park. We combined the event with the annual Arbor Day celebration, which is required to maintain our status as a Tree City USA with the Arbor Day Foundation. We advertised the event in the Scott County Herald and on the Great Scott Trees Facebook site and sent flyers out by email. Our event included training on the proper way to plant a tree, lunch, always nice, musical entertainment from Bill Maher and Ritter, a presentation from the four H Club, which you'll hear about later, a speech from the mayor, along with a reading of the Arbor Day Proclamation and a giveaway of tree seedlings to the public. The Parks Department was instrumental in this event. They purchased and picked up the trees to be planted, cleared the locations with utility companies, pre-dug the holes, and moved the trees to the proper locations to be planted. So a big shout out to the Parks Department. Throughout this process, they've been instrumental. Um, we were able to attract forty-five volunteers for this event, quite a few of whom were children. Um, that greatly helped our match. Our second planting event took place in October of two thousand twenty-two at Lake Iowa. Since we were concerned about getting volunteers in the fall, we decided to take advantage of a program the Parks Department has with Scott County Correctional Facility, where they were able to get volunteers from among the inmates to help out in parks. We were able to get three inmate volunteers who helped the Parks Department and some of the tree board members plant twenty trees at Lake Iowa. Our third and final planting event took place on April first of two thousand twenty-three at Lindsagram Park. We were hoping to have the help of the Youth Grant Making Council, but we had extremely high rents, so they had to cancel their participation. So the eight trees, fortunately it was only eight trees at Lindsagram, um, were parked, uh, were planted by the Parks Department, the tree board, and a few other volunteers. This was also our Arbor Day event for two thousand twenty-three, so the Arbor Day proclamation was read. And we also had in attendance Jonathan Pierce, a representative from Aaron. And I always never know how to pronounce your last name, is it Hutchins, Hutchins? Hutchins, Aaron Hutchins Office. So Jonathan Pierce came, he brought his own shovel, he helped us in the planting. And I have pictures of him getting dirty, so we're gonna put it out. And now Tom's gonna talk about community education and awareness, which was our third objective.
And we pretend I'm Mary Jones, Mary's gonna be here tonight. But we did four things to fulfill this objective. So we had the training and proper tree planting, which was part of the first event at Beechwood. Then we had a tree seedling giveaway, which is part of both of our spring events. Had a four H club that was formed and it was based on trees. And then we did partner with other community organizations. So at the first event, we invited volunteers to arrive at ten in the morning. They got some proper instructions on planting the tree. We go from Chuck Stewart here in a moment, and that's who Chuck was giving that proper planting. Uh, Chuck, you may know, was served as a city forester to the city of Scottsburg. Um, and he showed volunteers how to properly dig the hole, how to prepare the tree for planting, how to plant it, and then mulch it. We gave away seedlings at the event to encourage people to plant their own tree on their property. So Mary Jones and Carol Dunn, Great Scott Trees, started a four H club in the spring of two thousand twenty-two focusing on the trees. They called it the Treekeepers Four H Spark Club. They met for several sessions, had a six-hour four H experience, included our spring planting event. Eight kids aged seven to thirteen, they were in grades one to seven, they participated. Learned how the trees work, how it's important for us here in life on earth and how the children could get involved and help create and nurture healthy urban forests. I really feel like that, as Mary said before, the youth are really gonna be our future. So if we can get them involved and super excited, then I think we'll be doing quite well. So at that tree plant event, they learned again the proper way to plant it, mulch it, water the trees. Bless you. They assisted with the planting and then we had the entertainment, as Malina said, because, uh, they sang a tree keeper song they'd learned from Bob and Mary Ritter, uh, who accompanied them in their performance. And in their final session, they created a, uh, four H fair project. They had posters that portrayed important things they've learned about trees. And some children have expressed that they have been back to Beechwood since then to check on their tree. You know, the one that they helped plant. We did partner with other organizations in the community to further our mission. They included FFA. Maybe you all know this, this is the high schools FFA group here locally, the kids. And the health package, our bulk giveaway, the seedlings for that spring giveaway. The Master Gardeners, uh, here in the county, so they're members of the local group, also assisted us with the tree planting. And then there was a Citizens Climate Lobby group from Southern Indiana. And several of the members that here came from Jerseville to assist in the tree planting events. And finally, our Great Scott Trees. As Malina had mentioned them before, they're our local nonprofits. They assisted with the tree planting event this spring. They paid for that entertainment, uh, Mary and Bob. They had to pay for lunch for the participants, pay for the advertising and paper, provided that commemorative Arbor Day tree that we had purchased and we planted. They also paid for those tree seedlings that we had in the giveaway, which was two hundred of them in two thousand twenty-two and a hundred of them this year, two thousand twenty-three. So Malina's gonna explain some of the benefits from all this.
So just a few words on the benefits of these forty-seven trees that we planted. So in addition to the benefits of filling holes in our park's tree canopy resulting from the removal of so many ash trees and renewing the canopy as older trees decline and need to be replaced, there were some other benefits that maybe aren't quite as obvious. So the U.S. Forest Service has a software program called iTree that provides urban and rural forestry analysis and benefits assessment tools. So that means you put in your information, that way you plant it, and they tell you what those trees are worth to your community. So the iTree tools, these are their words, can help strengthen forest management and advocacy efforts by quantifying forest structure and the environmental benefits that trees provide. So it's like when I entered the forty-seven trees that we planted into the iTree program, um, that showed that they will remove nearly three pounds of pollutants from the air per year, provide almost two thousand pounds of carbon storage, and produce three hundred and twenty pounds of oxygen per year. They will also help avoid runoff of nine hundred and thirty-two gallons of water per year, especially important in a low-lying community like Scottsburg. Um, adding, uh, trees to our parks also makes our community more attractive for its residents and encourages visitors to spend time here. So we can't wait to get into street trees where we can especially have a positive effect on stormwater runoff and energy conservation, which comes into play when trees are planted in your buildings. And Chuck is now gonna talk to you about next steps.
Well, my name's Chuck Stewart, uh, I know some of you. What we've done here so far, uh, they talked about the right tree, right place, all benefits of the trees, uh, what it does for the community. What we need to do now is where we're going with that, what we're gonna do in the future to maintain our urban forest. Part of that is gonna be partnering with Parks Department, Tree Department, because we're mostly concerned with handling the trees on public property right now. Later on, if you get more advanced, like the city of Bloomington, they have a lot of control over private property too, as far as tree plantings and species selection and all that. But for now, start small, get bigger in the future. We have an existing urban forest management plan. It's about twenty-five years, twenty-four years old right now. We would like to update that and renew it, revise it, uh, keep the inventory up to date because now we got started, it would be nice to maintain that. And get together with some of the other departments, partnership, like I said, with the street department, Parks Department, maybe even get into some survey equipment to help with tree inventories in the future. Uh, I know that like, uh, some of the garment and, and treble units, they're kind of pricey upfront, but if you can spare, or if you can divide that asset between different departments, where everybody can use it, it's a little bit cheaper in the long run. And then, uh, the other issue is maintain that inventory. It's, as I mentioned earlier, with the inventory that was done for the grant. You identify hazards and what you need to do to mitigate the risks that are associated with hazards. So one of the big things about the last inventory we did is we identified, uh, I think there was eighteen thousand trees, something like that. And then of all those trees that were assessed, they were categorized by whether they was high priority managed, low priority managed, removed, whatever. And in doing that, you identify the risk and you kind of have a plan to how to address that risk. But then the bad thing that happened last time is that all that information got shelved and nothing happened. So you went from having a certain level of liability by having hazardous trees in the environment. And then you went out and assessed all those trees and identified them down to the address where they were. and identified them down to the address where they're located and started a plan to take action. And so your liability kind of went down a little bit, but then it got shelved and nothing happened, so then your liability risk skyrocketed after that. So trying to address the hazards, mitigate the risk is part of urban forest management. And the one big thing, it's always a kicker. It was here, worked in Salem, worked in Albany, same thing happened in all three places. Is you start out full speed getting these grants and getting all this work done and then the grant money runs out and you gotta foot the bill. That's the big problem right there, is coming up with a line item to fund this kind of work. So what I like to propose to you is start thinking about, you don't have to start off with a great big, you know, hundred thousand dollar everybody, that's crazy. Small community, start small, work your way up. Start thinking about how we can get a line item, but start working on this. And it might be just as simple as starting out with more training for the Parks Department guys to do that tree assessment. And then later on, maybe get some guys to do the inventory. And we've already got a train enough for planting, they don't have to do that now. They've done a great, been a great help pre-digging the holes and all the stuff they did. So if we can get started with something to sustain this program so it doesn't get shelved and just die off. So I'll be more happy to consult with the city anytime, I've always been available, you know, let Terry pass it. I've got a lot invested in this in the past and I'm willing to invest more in it in the future and work together and maintain our urban forest as an asset and not a liability. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask. There's been a lot of work done and there's a lot of work yet to be done, so.
Chuck's been the one that's done a lot of inventory, he's got a degree from Purdue, for Purdue at this. And what, what amount of money, Chuck, do you recommend in, in a budget?
Well, being a small town, I know budgets tight. You know, being on Fire Department, I always talk to you about what you do in truck, but he missed me. I know a little money's always tight in a small town. If you could soak it in the budget, a few thousand dollars to start with. You know, that would cover maybe removal of a dead tree or two or three. And then work on it in the future, add a little more each year if you possibly can. Ideally, what would be nice is if you could have a full-blown program like the city of Bloomington has, where you've got one or two people on staff full-time. You've got crews that are going around doing tree removal and pruning and all that kind of stuff. That's pretty expensive. I mean, you're looking, a salary for an urban forester is gonna be around sixty a year. So you got all the, you know, retirement benefits and all the stuff that adds on to that. That's just for one person and that's a lot to add to a budget. So starting off with a few thousand dollars just to cover maintenance, mainly mitigation of risks, you know, hazard, hazard tree removal. Specifically focusing on like Beechwood Park, Lake Iowa, where you got dead trees and dead limbs and trees that are hanging over top lots and playgrounds and stuff like that, that's a big deal. After you get the parks taken care of to where you don't have a, like down at Beechwood a number of years ago, there used to be a lot of huge trees at Beechwood Park, you know, sixty-ish diameter trees. There was a little slide and a swing, I think, sitting underneath one of them. Well, about sixty feet up in here in that tree, overhanging a slide was a dead limb about this big around about forty mile. That's, that's an issue, you know. Those are the kind of things that if they're off, they're gonna potentially kill somebody if they land on them. But they're definitely gonna do some property damage. So trying to take care of that kind of risk to start with. Once you get the park areas taken care of and where they're safe, then you can start looking at limbs overhanging parking areas and city lots and, you know, blocking stop signs and traffic lights and things like that.
So is it there, is it like that now?
No, that, that fell down, unfortunately no one was around and didn't do that. But there were a number of trees down there that died back in the turn of the century. And a lot of work was done. I don't know if the, if the Street Department headed it up or if the Parks Department did it. But they took, they had vaguely, I think it was Mike or Mr. Veggly took a bunch of trees down from them. Jim Sadler was taking care of a lot of it back at the early, late nineties before he retired. When I was new to the tree inventory, I would get on him if I had something dangerous and he would get to take care of it. And a lot of that goes hand in hand to the Street Department and electric utilities because you have street trees that are planted, they're planted along the streets, but they're not in ideal locations. You got too narrow of a grass path for the tree. And they look, the roots don't necessarily lift the sidewalk, the way the sidewalks are constructed and freezing and thawing the soil. The sidewalks move and then the tree roots go under, so they never settle back down. You know, the tree roots aren't gonna lift that compy out of the way. But they will take advantage of the freezing and thawing of the soil and keep it from settling back down. And then you add overhead utility lines, electric lines. And there's some trees down at Beechwood Park right now along Mervis Street, Bond Street, where they need to go down on some river, that are actually burning in the tree phase.
Wow, wow.
So that kind of stuff needs to be addressed. And that's where you work in partnership with these other city agencies as a team because the trees are growing on state property. They're growing on long streets, they're growing in parks, they're growing underneath the till lines, they're growing over top sugar lines, over top orange lines. So you got all kind of work together.
And for council knows well, our electric company does have a tree, where we actually have all of our equipment to cut the trees, to trim the trees, to grind the trees up and our men have all been sent to schools. If I have schools we go to to learn about vegetation and how close we can beat the lies and dot lies. And so we've, you know, we can get, so we wanna work hand in hand with youth groups. And we wanna continue our tree inventory. So we want, we wanna continue with our.
I mean, a lot of work's been done, it would be a shame for it to get shelved.
Yes, we don't wanna do that, we wanna continue on. And can you guys, between Tom and Malvina, Chuck, can you tell us who else is on the board?
Well, DK Cunningham recently joined.
Yeah.
Mary Jones.
Mary Jones.
And Dale Hawes.
Dale Hawes. Carol Dunn?
No.
Okay, okay.
She's on the Great Scott Trees.
Okay.
Not on the Scottsburg Tree Board.
And there were more people, weren't there?
Had been Josh Bixler, but DK just replaced him.
Okay.
Oh, and Jerry.
Jerry asked.
Jerry.
Well, thank you guys so very much. Does council, do you have questions for?
Yeah, any questions?
Appreciate all you've done, you've done a lot.
Thank you for your attention, appreciate it.
I wanna tell you a story. In, in Israel, when the Ottoman Empire came in, they taxed the people ownership by the number of trees that they had. And so if you're being taxed for another trees, that's what you did, you cut the trees down. So Israel was literally de-forested. So when Israel became a nation again in nineteen forty-eight, they began planting trees all over. So in Jerusalem, you could go, when you go there, plant a tree for your mom or your brother or whoever. And that was a joy to do with planting trees. And as these trees grow, they just praise the Lord by smirking, wave to the Lord and the songs, when the wind blows through the shop, it's just a blessing. So thank you guys so very much for all you're doing for our city. So we salute you, thank you Pastor very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanna say, recognize too, Malvina, as our chairperson or president, she's done a lion's share of all this work, put together all the slides, and I think this is pretty good too, so appreciate that.
Thank you, Malvina, because you've got a brand too, so thank you so very much. Great job, great job, great job. Thank you also very much. Next in our agenda this evening is the first reading of Orders 2023-16, an order submitting personnel policies of the city of Scottsburg again. Chief, I think, Chief, you want, Chief, you want to carry this?
Yes, what this is gonna do is it's gonna amend our longevity pay for officers. And it's a recruitment and retainment deal, what we're trying to do. We're gonna be hiring some people and in the future, we've got a department that's getting older and there's gonna be a lot of replacement. And we're trying to persuade basically people from other departments where we can get them to come in here and work. We don't have to send to the academy and do those things. And this just says that if you graduate and you're considered chairable and graduate in the law enforcement academy, once you graduate that, then if you're with another department and you come here, you've got like five years of service and would leave that department, come here and say, no, I'm just starting out at one percent, you'll start out at five percent from where you came from the academy. And I've worked with the clerk trailer for Jan here, the money's there, so you, basically we just need your approval.
What question do you have?
Your question.
Yeah, I'll be on the next one. I'll make a motion to approve.
Christian Evans makes a motion to approve on First Reading of Orders 2023-16. Is there a second to that? Bill, hold on a second, is that any questions, comments, concerns? Hear now, over there, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have a vote, thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to go forward with Second, Third Reading, by time.
Chuck Rose makes a motion for the Second, Third Readings, or a second?
I'll second.
Question, have a second? Question, comments, concerns? Hear now, over there, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Chris Adams, are you there?
Yeah, that's a good aye for me.
Okay, didn't hear it, alright, thank you very much. You have a vote, thank you very much. Now we'll forward with the vote to approve on Second, Third Readings, or does 2023-16, the motion?
Oh, yes, I'll make the motion to approve on Second, Third Reading.
Christian Evans makes a motion to approve on Time, Second, Third Readings, is there a second?
Alright.
Christian, now Chuck, Chuck Rose makes the second, sorry, Bill.
You can.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Hear now, over there, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have a vote, thank you very much. Or does 2023-16 passes on all three readings? Well, I'm here, so I don't forget it. We have an amazing event at eleven-thirty this Friday morning at the Mid-American Science Park to say thank you to our chief, Scott Sellers. He's going to be retiring, they have to put this in about a year, a year and a half ahead of time. So he's going to be retiring. And the celebration is this Friday, so if you can make it, please come by, shake his hand, make him resurface. So, you know, Chief, what else do you, you have for us on this?
Just, you know, if you can come Friday, I'm sure he'll appreciate you show up and sing and mumble.
Is there any type of initiation you do, Chief, and when somebody leaves like this, do we need to bring squirt guns or anything?
No, we can just, just a little bit of swearing in for me and then we'll go from there.
There you go, Chief, thank you so very much. Okay, we'll go down next to Resolution, Resolution 2023-R-6, a resolution transferring real property of the Scottsburg Redevelopment Commission. Is there a motion?
I'll explain, just so the council's aware of exactly what we're doing here. The property the city owns on Highway 31 just past where our electric department is located across from Volte Color. That's been a property that we've talked about in the past. We had some discussions numerous times on with some of the updates as far as state funding with the Ready Grant and also state funding from the House Bill 1005 for looking at putting together some packages to try to generate some of this money from a housing and industrial job creation, keeping those folks here in the community. So I have some ideas with this site, however, owning it, having the city have ownership of the site does limit the ability to go after some of that funding and have a little bit more flexibility. So that is why this is on here tonight, is a resolution to transfer the property from an ownership of the city to the Redevelopment Commission to give a little bit more flexibility in what we can do with the properties going forward, so. If you have any questions, I can hopefully answer some of those too.
So we're gonna put this in the back burner this evening?
I'm good to pass, I don't think that anybody else has any questions.
How much acreage, what, how much are we talking about?
It says it in here, doesn't it?
Yeah.
It's, it's the water tower property.
About forty-five, forty-seven acres.
Forty-five point eight two.
Is that what, is that part of the dorm field purchase?
What?
Is that part of the dorm field, Chuck, or is this a different parcel?
I do some of that. I believe the property, that, you know, literary green project and also that it was considered for that and the solar field, there have been several things considered there. But I understand Christians, issues with having the city on it and trying to, trying to work with some grants and some alternative funding sources, it kind of limits you. And if the property is sold, then the city re-apprives, is that correct, Christian?
That's my question.
Yeah, so.
Money changing hands now, it's ours for the city side.
Yeah, so in the resolution, it states that since we're asked the Redevelopment Commission, the city agreed the city shall be reimbursed by the commission upon he sell the real estate for the city's expenditures related to the real estate in amounts to be determined at the time of said sale. And it also goes on to say that the commission will notify the city of the offers received concerning the real estate will seek to input from the city prior to accepting any offer for the real estate. So it is defined in the resolution and on the back as well of that process there.
That's the same language we used on the Chiefs.
I know that.
Same process, absolutely. I've got the RDC resolution, they have to pass a light resolution. It is on their agenda for Wednesday, so assuming that occurs, then the mayor and UJ will be authorized that it should be to complete the process.
So the council has to approve the resolution first, I mean.
They each have to pass, you guys just meet first, so it doesn't necessarily have to.
I did know there was.
Doesn't have to be one before the other.
I'm, I'm fine with, with making a motion, we pass this resolution.
Okay.
With the vote on.
We'll take a vote, are you making a motion to go ahead and pass Resolution 2023-R-6? Chuck Rose, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Question, have a second, is that any questions, comments? Hear now, over there, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have a vote, thank you very much. Resolution 2023-R-7, idea in the resolution regarding, a resolution regarding the appropriation of additional funds for the city of Scottsburg. Josh, you want to speak to that?
On the additional appropriation, I think this has been a.
This is the, yeah.
Yeah.
The correct, that's what we advertised, this is what we had discussed as council.
Right.
The hundred and fifteen thousand is for the upgrade to our software that we, you know, discussed in December that we would have to do an additional because it was an emergency situation. And this other is we don't have permission to spend for a new vehicle or the ambulance shelter. So that's, that's what this hundred and sixty-five thousand is. Just to, so we can get the paperwork started to get approval to spend it.
I know there was some discussion about this resolution in looking at maybe table in it, at least this meeting, to table in this ordinance, or table this resolution for this meeting. I'm coming back to it, are we good now, assuming after the change of the name with the two that's been spelled out?
The change in this one needed to be that it wasn't all for city upgrades.
Correct.
This is the one that Josh sent the.
So with this, in the way that it's worded, we are, it's good from your standpoint, Jane, as far as appropriating it.
Hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Okay, that's all just information.
Yes, thank you.
So now that we're, we're good on that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. One second. We have a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash seven uh, regarding appropriation of additional funds for the city of Scottsburg. Supplies one fifteen and equipment fifty, a total of one sixty-five. We have a motion by Christian Evans, seconded by Bill Holden. Are there questions on this at all?
For what we discuss?
Here now, old person say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bananas, thank you very much. Next on our agenda this evening is resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash eight, resolution adopting community investment of utility use of funding provided by the American Rescue Plan to support the city of Scottsburg recovery from COVID nineteen.
So on this one as well, uh, there's been some discussion of the council and how we are utilizing the ARPA funding. Uh, we'd already have did the out two hundred and twenty-five thousand for the premium pay. We did that. Um, is it going on two years now? Almost two years that we did that. So, uh, we're looking at developing a plan. So what I would like to do, um, for today's sake, uh, some of the amounts in the resolution, were a little bit more all encompassing than what we were looking at doing so far. Uh, I would like to make a motion to table this tonight so that we can get a plan fully, um, with how we're going to utilize the funds and approve it all together as opposed to segment it over a couple of meetings. So let's table it tonight unless anybody has an objection to that. And then come back at the next meeting, um, with a fully comprehensive list so we can do it all at once.
Does anyone have, uh, objection to Councilman Evans putting a resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash anything in the background? Here now, we'll put it in the background. Councilman, uh, Alvinson, are you okay with that?
Yeah, that sounds like a good plan. I think we agree with it.
Okay, we'll table this.
And the mayor, don't want to interrupt you, but I'll save you the trouble. The next ordinance ties to this. I'll just go ahead and, and make a motion to table that as well, so.
The motion to table orders twenty twenty-three dash seventeen as well. Uh, willing to, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eight, R eight. So, uh, I guess we can say vote. Vote, table both of these. All people say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yanis, thank you very much. Okay, that concludes everything on our agenda. What do we have for announcements this evening?
We've been discussing a, any take of session Thursday at three. Let's still work everyone.
Thursday at three?
Chris, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm not having anything new for much of the, the lifetime of the job that I'm supposed to do.
Okay, I know Rick won't be back from vacation yet, but I've spoken to him, so I'll, I'll be able to kind of shed some of his, share some of his feelings.
I've got, I've got two big meetings that day. Let's see. And this is, uh, this one affecting Clark.
It's, it's okay for nine, it's three o'clock, it's another meeting.
Okay, so tree team, okay, can we wait?
It doesn't, I don't know if we sit here, but we can, we can change that.
So.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Breaking in here? Yeah, we're good? Ready to be back?
Nope.
Uh, what else do we have for announcements? We have a couple that we've done here in the city. We have a, we put up for quote, uh, seal coating of the back lot as well as the Mid American Science Park. Seal coating is striking. So that was awarded this morning. To Nelson, that's, that's going to be done on Wednesday. So on Wednesday, in the back lot, you're not going to build a park here. So if you are normally parking in the back lot in the city of Scottsburg downtown, that's going to be all roped off. We're wanting this for the Mayberry event, so we got everything looking sharp. Uh, Mid American Science Park is going to be next week, so, uh, but this Wednesday is, is the back lot. And, uh, you know, so also, uh, we accepted a, uh, a quote to begin rehabilitating our sidewalks. We're going where we're cutting it again, edging, getting all of the sod and grass off of it, power washing, using, uh, to dryen the, the sidewalks up. Notes will be made where those hard portions of sidewalk, uh, that are crumbled and need to be replaced, that will be noted. And so we'll get enough to get a, an entire concrete truck, I think it's four twenty at the time, or we'll, we'll get that done. And Chuck, just to give you a heads up, that would actually be a new sidewalk from West Fifty-Six down to West Street. We want to start at first level church and clean that sidewalk. Can you guys look here at that? And then get it all the way down to Lake Iowa on Highland Street. So that's what we're trying to do right away. So basically seal coating, the city does have a design company looking at our sidewalk programs as well. So we're going forward with that in renovation, replacement and whatnot with our sidewalks. As we have paved the city with this beautiful picture, the sidewalks is the picture framed around our streets, so. Let's now go to, along the, the, the.
Uh, Mayberry is a little fat mayor. Give you, this is our last chance, I guess, to give you a, a report here at a meeting before our event in less than two weeks. That's amazing. We've worked a long time and now it's almost here. As of tonight, we've sold five hundred and eighty-four tickets to ticketed events. Uh, I'm told by several people who do this that the trend is that most people like to buy at the door or they wait until the last minute, I guess, to determine whether they can make it or not. And I've been told that it's not unusual that you can count on between two and three times actual attendance to your pre-sales. So if we sell six hundred tickets pre-sale and we have twice that many, now you're at twelve hundred, fifteen hundred or more. Uh, and we know that there will be a lot of people that will come who aren't buying tickets, but just come to the free events and those kind of things. So, uh, and our trending in terms of social media, we're consistently running anywhere from twenty to thirty thousand, uh, impacts with as many as five thousand engagements on our social media. Uh, and so I really am, and we talked earlier on about what we thought attendance might be. Uh, and we still, we won't know until they get here, but I would not be surprised if we have twenty-five hundred to three thousand people here that weekend.
Wow, great.
Uh, I know that I've told you this, we have people coming from ten states, uh, and more coming in all the time, so very, very excited about the attendance. Been working very closely with Jill and the team here at the city. And I'm sure you guys know this, but Jill and her team and city employees are doing yeoman's work to prepare the city, to get our venues in place, to get all the organization in order. Uh, to work with people like the police department, the fire department and others, uh, to just make sure that we have everything in, in order as well as we can have it. This being a first time for all of us, uh, you know, there's going to be some unknowns. But I'm so proud of the city and the way that they're working and the way they've encouraged and supported this effort. And so I really feel like that the city of Scottsburg is prepared to put its best foot forward. And people who come here from around the country are going to know what we know, that this is a wonderful city. The Mayberry spirit is still alive and well here, uh, and people care for each other, as you've mentioned. And it's a great place to live and work, and we hope that a lot of them find that it's a great place to come back and visit too. So we're very excited about it. Things are going, uh, I think as well as they can at this point. And, uh, I would say that I'm just incredibly grateful for the opportunity to be involved and for your support and encouragement through the process. We're going to have a great time.
Amen. Thank you so very much. We are intending to, uh, prune our flowers, prune our trees, seal coat, clean, clean the covers, as it were, to make everyone welcome to, so Scottsburg can be Scottsburg proud. And, uh, of what we have here and our reception, our folks are so friendly. And so, uh, a little bit different than New York City, uh, you know, so. But another thing too is, uh, uh, just after the water board, I don't know if you know this or not, I'll just give you a heads up. And I, I go across that causeway there. I still see people out and even youngsters out. One of the things the water board is considering doing is buying a couple floating docks, just to give everybody a heads up that, to try to. And the city owns, if you all know where Junior Howard lives, from that, from his driveway going south into the lake that's all city owned. And there's a place back there that's ideal that we can put a floating dock, maybe remove it in the wintertime. But, uh, we're looking to possibly put a floating dock or two out there and maybe a little shelter for them. And, uh, a little fish, fish plenty area as well, so, uh, some things like that to run on. What else do we have? Josh, you think we like?
I cannot.
Okay, Jill, anything else? Okay. Okay, well, I guess, uh, Chief Zellers this Friday and, uh, next, not this week, but next weekend, Mayfair. So a lot going on in the world, so, uh, uh, Council, do you have anything else for us this evening? Okay, if not, we'll take the motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Salute. We're, thank you so very much.